Meeting to order on September 28th at 9:00 AM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland is absent. Tom Baylor?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Melina Meyer?
Here.
Ann Schaefer?
Here.
David Allison?
Here.
And David Gleiser?
Here.
That is all of council.
Who to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Any councilmember have anything to disclose? All right. Communications and petitions from visitors. So anybody from the audience want to come up and comment about the agenda items? Nope. All right. New business, interviews. First up, we have Karen Kramer. You want to come up and have a seat right here? And we'll do it similar to how we did the video interview. So council will go around and answer one of the questions that we have on the sheet. And then at the end, you'll have time to ask us questions or do a follow-up back and forth discussion.
That's good.
I'll go ahead and start. All right. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
How would your post be finding revenues and increase expenses in the budget cycle?
All right. Communications and petitions from visitors. So anybody from the audience want to come up and comment about the agenda items?
Increase revenues?
Right. New business, interviews.
So I know revenues are...
First up, we have Karen Kramer. You want to come up and have a seat right here?
Different from year to year, but I think that there's other sources.
We'll do it similar to how we did the video interview. So council will go around and answer one of the questions that we have on the sheet. And then at the end, you'll have time to ask us questions or do a follow-up back and forth discussion.
My approach to increasing revenues.
I'll go ahead and start. All right. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
How would your post be finding revenues and increase expenses in the budget cycle? You know, I don't know enough about all of the details of every department.
Communications and petitions from visitors. So anybody from the audience want to come up and comment about the agenda items?
To partner with other people.
Right. New business, interviews. First up, we have Karen Kramer. You want to come up and have a seat right here?
Different from year to year, but I think that there's other sources.
We'll do it similar to how...
Collaborating with other people.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Have you ever been involved in litigation in the context of employer or employee relationships? If so, are you at liberty to describe it to us?
Trying to think. I've been, I don't think I've been in litigation, working for a tribe, that it's fairly difficult to become involved in employee-employer litigation. There have been wage and hour disputes where the state wage and hour folks have picked up a couple cases with the four employees. And NBE was able to successfully show that those weren't legitimate. But it's hard to litigate against a tribe if it's possible, but...
Thank you.
Okay. How do you approach strategic planning? Please describe successful techniques for establishing and implementing long-range and short-range goals for Cordova.
To start out with strategic planning, see if the council feels like it's a good time to do that. Check with department heads and staff to see where the last strategic plan is. You know, are we mid-cycle? Are we still going forward on the last plan? Or is it time to do a new plan? I find that an outside facilitator, if you contract with the right one, is helpful. Kind of have a retreat form and bring in the community, the affected community, works well. And kind of go down not only a wish list, but what is possible. Everybody would like a lot of things, but is it possible? And is it really in the city's plan to provide those things? Kind of weed through that and then go through it, adopt it. Council needs to adopt it before staff can try to implement it. And then really after that, do an operations plan for the staff, for each department and the staff as a whole, where that's where you really nail down your short-term goals, the little steps of what you can do. And then you have your long-term goals as part of those short-term. Where are you going to be in five years or 10 years? But you've got to have your six-month goals. And so an operations plan, actually that's the roadmap for staff. And then you check it often at your monthly meetings. How far along are we?
Great. Thank you.
A follow-up. A, from what you have learned so far about Cordova, what do you believe to be the city's challenges and opportunities? And what ideas do you have to develop some of those community opportunities?
I think that when the challenges are the transportation, the movement of goods and services, how do we do that? How do we recruit people when it's so expensive to go to a different place? How do we move those goods and services economically so that the cost of living doesn't go sky-high? I mean, I think transportation is a huge challenge for Cordova. And I guess isolation is a huge challenge, but transportation has kind of come and gone. I mean, I think there's opportunity to get that back, to really facilitate the movement of all of the goods and services, which without that, it makes it so much more difficult. How I would address that particular challenge? It depends on what the citizens would like to see. I mean, we can go the legislative route with AMHS and ask for a public corporation or ask for legislative appropriations. We can go that route. We can go the route of IFA, which is subsidized by the state but mostly private. Or we could look into privatization of it. But I would like to reach out to all the communities and see what their, what their thoughts and ideas are and whether they want to stay within the AMH system or not. I would also reach out to all of the transporters, which is freight service and Alaska Airlines, and see what they would need to be more supportive. Cargo flights once a week, it's not really optimal for us, especially our fishermen. But what do they need in order to support it? I don't see the city's role as getting into business. I see the city's role, and I could be wrong, as supporting that, in incentives or, you know, going out to the public and saying, hey, Alaska Airlines says that it will have more cargo flights if we can do more business. What kind of businesses look like would be appropriate for Cordova? And that we've always marketed our resources, so what resources are there? And who wants to develop those resources? Hopefully, that answered it. I don't know.
Okay. Cordova has a mix of federal, state, and tribal government offices, a city school district, a city hospital, and various nonprofits. Please tell us how, tell us about successful partnerships you have developed with such organizations.
Okay. So worked for the tribe and reached out to the city, had leadership meetings with most of the organizations here. Was hopefully facilitating a little bit better relationship with the city. Reached out to the school. I think that the school's been a really good partner. We were able to get Culture Week in the elementary school every year, so I think that worked out well. We had sobriety celebration there for a number of years. I think that NBE's relationship when I left with the school was pretty well. Federal partners, Forest Service, Robert Skarkowski was really, you know, really great partner, and Dave Zastro as well. We were able to partner on several contracts where NBE was able to maintain some of its more high-priority projects and thinning projects with the Forest Service. And so I think that we had a pretty good relationship there. We had the crew, which is the Copper River Renewable Energy Work Group, which brought together the Science Center, Forest Service, city, state agencies. I have a pretty good relationship with the district planning, the Northern District Planning Department, worked on a lot of projects with them. Wasn't successful in figuring out the bridge washout yet, but we were working on it. They came down and we had monthly meetings and we had little tasks and checklists that we did. So I have a pretty good relationship with the state representative, Representative Stoops more than Gary Stevens, but pretty good relationship there. We were helpful in getting the commissioner permits with Tanner Krabman, and Louise was really instrumental in that. I still have a good relationship with her, you know, texts me and asks me things, you know, about AMHS mostly. So I think I partner well.
Thank you. Do you want me to do the follow-up? I'll do the follow-up question for that one. What's your familiarity working with tribal governments such as NBE or Native Village Viak?
I'm pretty darn familiar. I will say that probably I know the support and the value of tribal government and how they can integrate and partner with other local governments to make everything stronger.
Thank you, Karen. What do you see as your primary strengths and your weaknesses?
I see my strengths as knowing the community. I mean, I'm familiar with the community. I think I know what the needs are and how what citizens want, so I think that's a strength. I think I have partnerships with state and federal agencies and delegation. And those partnerships are in context of Cordova. I mean, Native Village Viak, yes, but also Cordova, the surrounding area. So they're not looking at me going, oh, well, yes, I know her in an acreage or somewhere context, or Seattle context or something. They're looking at me going, oh, yes, I know these projects. So I'm already familiar with projects in Cordova. So I think that's a strength. I think that a strength, I mean, I've had a lot of HR experience. I think that's a definite strength in coming into a new organization and getting to know staff and, well, I know quite a few of the staff here already, but knowing how all of the departments work together. So I think that's a strength. I think my knowledge of the healthcare issues here in Cordova is a strength and my commitment to alleviating those and my knowledge of the process and kind of where it's going. And hopefully, it's going, I mean, it sounds like it's going in a great direction. So I think that's a strength as well. My weaknesses? I mean, I've been at the same place for 17 years, which is a strength. I mean, you can see that I've got longevity, but that also could be a weakness because I've been in one organization for so long. Fortunately, that's been an organization that's allowed me to grow and do a lot of different things. It's not, you know, the organization had, well, we had transportation, we had enterprises, we had social services, we had clinic, we had, so we had a diverse selection. But it is just one organization and it is in Cordova. I haven't really worked outside of Cordova, so I guess that's a weakness.
To what extent do you believe contact with citizens and citizen groups is important? How would you typically handle this responsibility?
I think it's really important. I think the more, if you can, so if there's a change coming, I think the sooner you can get that out to the public and in a way that they can engage with it and realize that this isn't something that's just going to go away, that they, that, you know, everyone prioritizes their time. And citizens have got their own lives and they're looking at this over here going, oh, that probably won't happen, I'm not going to deal with it until all of a sudden it's there and they're like, oh, my goodness, it is happening. But I think just kind of communicating, no, this is a process the city is going down. So if you want your voice heard and it not to happen or for it to happen, you need to come and engage because it's not something someone's thinking about. It's an actual process that's going to happen. I like the newsletters that the city sends out. I hear from a lot of people that they read those. I think Facebook is good. I think there needs to be or should be a policy on how those Facebook posts come out so you don't have to retract them. You know, you get really excited and go, oh, this has happened and oh, oops, now there's a hitch. So I think there needs to be some sort of procedure on how to do that. But the amount of people that are on Facebook, I think that's really good. I think, I mean, I've always kind of had an open-door policy. If citizens want to come down, come on down and chat. And citizen groups. I like to go around and meet with the groups, like Watershed Project, and, you know, those guys, at least call them up and say, hey, this is what we're doing, what are you doing? Keep in contact at least a few times a year or more if there's something, a project that we're collaborating on.
I got the wrong chair. This is our last question we have on the page. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Well, I think it's the people. Finding the right people for the right projects or for the projects. Being very careful on your selection of your staff. And then after that, supporting them. Seeing what they need. Are there, you know, are there skill gaps? Are there, do they need tools? Are they not getting the job done because there's tools? Are they feeling unsupported? Are they feeling, the feeling that they just don't have the ability to get a job done? And seeing, you know, seeing what their needs are and then being an inspirational leader to say, you know what, we can do this and it's going to be great when we do it and we're going to, you know, giving them that positive feedback, getting them the acknowledgement of when they have accomplished the project, of telling the community, hey, look at the great things that, you know, your city crew did for you. And doing that quickly and publicly as soon as it happens so everyone feels supported and really mentoring them and then getting out of their way and letting them do it.
All right. Well, that was the list of questions that we had, so now I'd like to just open up to you to ask us questions or comments or if anybody else on council has a follow-up question that they'd like to ask. Anybody from council first? No? Right. Karen, do you have any questions or comments for us? I know you had a tour that you were given and then the meet and greet.
Yes, I learned a lot. That was a great tour. It was extensive. Thanks, Tony, for taking me around and spending the whole day with me. I think I asked council this last time, you know, what the biggest priority is. I know that the capital priority is the harbor. And I guess, what does council see as the biggest challenge coming up for the next city
Anybody else want to field this question?
Well, I don't know if it's a tricky answer because it's the hospital situation, but that's not really the city manager's job in a way, you know what I mean? It's not like the city manager's negotiating that. But it's a city issue, it's a budget issue, so the city manager will have to deal with it in that aspect. Whether we move forward or we stay the same, then it impacts our budget. So it's a big, I don't know, your thoughts on that? Are you familiar with it at all?
I am, yeah, I am familiar with it. I'm familiar with the budget issues. I sat on the board before, I sat on the old board, not on the new board for a while, so... And then I, you know, we, NBE was, well, is still involved with the hospital as the other healthcare provider in Cordova. I definitely have ideas on as we move forward. I think tribal health is the way to go. I did when I worked at NBE, I still do. There's so much support within the tribal system. I don't know how that could look exactly. I know that, you know, Greg's working really hard on that and trying, you know, trying to get some support. I told him, I think I have probably a couple names. I was going to try to think of a couple names of maybe consultants or people he can contact that might be able to help, and I'll do that. I think from the city manager's perspective, it's what is the city's obligation and what will it be if the healthcare gets either integrated or tribal health becomes the healthcare provided in Cordova? What is the city's obligation in protecting the city's interests? And if the city wants to be a partner in that new model, what is that role? And what kind of either policy or ordinance changes or procedures would go into that?
All right. Anybody else want to add to that, council? No? Any more questions or anything for us?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you for coming in this morning.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. We're a little bit early for schedule.
Do we want to just recess?
Take a recess and, should we set a time?
Round up, yeah.
Because we've got to round up.
I don't know. What do you think? 45, 9:45? Is that too much time?
Let's do 9:30 right now and then if we need to extend it.
Okay. Come back in at 9:30?
Andy going to contact?
I think so. Maybe after.
Recession. Hi, Alita Bus. We're going to go ahead and start with the interview. It's going to be very similar to how we did the video interview last time. Council's going to take turns going around and ask one of the questions that we have on the sheets.
Great.
And we'll start over there with Tom Baylor.
All right. Good morning. Good morning.
How would you approach declining revenues and increase expenses in this budget cycle?
Declining revenues? I think the council has looked at that previously and put it to the voters and the voters turned it down, so I'm open to your suggestions on that. I think that some ideas in the comprehensive plan outline looking to tourism. I understand you have four of the smaller cruise lines coming next year. Those are usually higher-end vessels that would bring in some monies. I think you can look again to different types of taxes. When you have specific projects, like the Harbor Grant, you did have the voters approve an increase there, and so perhaps targeted, more targeted, project-oriented taxes would increase revenue. I think looking at lobbying in this, lobbying the state is really important. The advocacy that I've seen from this community around the ferry system is, shows how effective that can be, I think, in uniting the community toward letting this current administration know what the community needs. And, you know, you can't let up on things like community revenue sharing and things like that to get state funding. I'll stop there.
I guess this means it's my turn. Have you ever been involved in litigation in the context of employer-employee relations? And if so, are you at liberty to describe it to us?
I have not been.
Okay. How do you approach strategic planning? Please describe successful techniques for establishing and implementing long-range and short-range goals for Cordova.
Good question. I think you start with a vision, you do a lot of public outreach. Comprehensive plan, I think, has been a great example of that. You started in the fall of 2018 and did a lot of, made a lot of effort to ask the community what they value and develop goals and have a, and develop an implementation plan for how to achieve those goals. So I think more of that is, I mean, I think what you need to do for strategic planning.
Okay. Another follow-up. What you've been so far about Cordova, what do you believe to be the city's challenges and opportunities? And what ideas do you have to develop some of those community opportunities?
Yeah, I think it's clear from talking with people last night that the loss of ferry service this winter is a really big challenge. You know, you do have really good access here, being so close as you are to Valdez and Whittier, and with the loss of the ferry system, that's pretty crippling for business, for medical access, everything. And so I think you can't give up on that fight. I think that the opportunities, one thing that's outlined in the comprehensive plan is working with Fish and Game to identify and develop new fisheries. So I think there's always opportunities there. With bringing the Science Center on out the road seems like a great opportunity. The Harbor Project, that construction will bring in a lot of jobs. I think there are a lot of opportunities. Dottie was telling me last night that she plans to develop the Net Loft on First Street in a bigger facility. And so you have people and small businesses who are invested in the community and looking to expand, and that's a really good sign, I think.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Cordova has a mix of federal, state, and tribal government offices, a city school district, a city hospital, and various nonprofits. Please tell us about successful partnerships you have developed with such organizations.
Sure. In one of my previous positions, I was working on some pretty complex state regulatory initiatives, and we worked a lot with the tribal community and the federal government. And I think it's tough to navigate those stakeholder groups all the time, and if you can let folks know what you're up to early, that's important. And can you repeat the question again?
Please tell us about successful partnerships you have developed with such organizations.
All right. Let me think a little.
And it was for federal, state, tribal, also with our school district hospital, so kind of just any organization that a small community like this would have.
Let me, can we come back to this question?
Sure.
All right.
Then there's actually another follow-up. What is your familiarity working with tribal governments such as the Native Village Viak?
Okay. I was in my position at the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation under the Walker administration was the department's tribal liaison. And all the leadership positions in the department were encouraged strongly to go through a tribal training through First Alaskans Institute did this with all of the governor's office and the department's division directors and any leadership staff. And it was a really valuable training, I think, led by First Alaskans. And as you're probably aware, the governor had a Governor's Tribal Advisory Council set up, so it was a direct voice to the governor's office from the tribal community. And I think that really was a success. I think the tribal community saw it as a success. And then as a department, we thought that that seemed successful because we had a really positive working relationship with the tribes. And DEC has some requirements where you, with any permitting, already requires early notification to tribes. But the Governor's Tribal Advisory Council created another layer of, you know... But the Governor's Tribal Advisory Council created another layer of, you know, trust and relationship building that I think helped all of those processes that are already in place. And so I, in that position, I conducted interviews with a bunch of staff that do some of the programs in rural Alaska to see where we could find some improvements to make in some of the ways that DEC is communicating with the tribal community in Alaska in some of the brownfields programs and wastewater and sewer. So I would say I had some good experience there.
Thank you.
In that position, thanks.
And then what do you see as your primary strengths and your weaknesses?
I remember this question from last round.
We threw it in again.
I think having worked in a political position in the State Senate for a number of years and also in the leadership in the Department of Environmental Conservation, I have some of the executive management skills. I think that's a strength, so organization and communication. I think I have this political acumen where you can work with different personalities and ideas and kind of implement the vision of political office holders. And maybe a weakness, I've worked a little directly with municipal government. I had a position with the City and Borough of Juneau when I first got out of college, doing a special project for them, looking at their energy use and writing a plan for how to save money on energy costs and reduce carbon emissions. So I have a little bit of municipal government experience, but most of my experience has been in the state government for the last decade. And so I think a weakness would be that I don't have the direct familiarity with local government, but I think that that's something that I could learn with a little help from everyone involved.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Could I just ask?
Follow-up, yes.
So the energy costs, did you know if any of that got implemented? That what you?
Yeah, good question.
Tell me again what it was and then was it implemented?
So it was greenhouse gas emissions inventory, gauging energy use both for city government operations and then kind of trying to get a picture of the community, bigger picture. So including Alaska Airlines and things that the city doesn't directly impact. And the city has done some of that, I think, whether or not it's because of the plan or just natural things that come with time, like improving, I mean, Juneau's already largely hydro power, but there are some advocacy groups that are saying, you know, we'll reach cost and energy savings by doing X, and some of that is happening. Yeah, good question.
Hey, Alita, thanks for coming this morning. To what extent do you believe contact with citizens and citizen groups is important? And how would you typically handle this responsibility?
Yes, I think it's very important, and I really enjoyed the meet and greet last night because I think a lot of times, you know, you have your insiders who follow city government pretty closely, but it takes everyone to make, you know, to make the city successful. And oftentimes, you know, you can't just kind of operate in a bubble. You need to understand what, you know, what's happening on the fishing grounds, what's happening in the local coffee shop, and hear from folks who are, you know, trying to make ends meet. And I think the public brings in a lot of important perspective that you need to listen to. So I think I would have an open-door policy where folks could make an appointment and we can sit down and listen there. And of course, the council, I assume, is also open to that, and folks can come and you all will listen, and we can take that into consideration and see where it fits in. So I think that is important. It's a small town, so folks need to feel like they are being listened to. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
I think communication is really important. I think when you have different people in charge of different things, you need to trust that each person is getting their job done. One person can't do everything. And then you need to let folks know what's working, what's not working. Leadership needs to empower staff to feel like they are being respected in what they're doing. It was pretty interesting being down at the shop yesterday. We were talking to Mark, and he was saying that he has this staff, Will, who just has this really, he's just really gifted in building tools and doing the machinery down there. And, you know, he was saying, we really need to look at promoting Will because he has a lot of potential. And I think for leadership to recognize staff who show potential and who can be developed is important. And that way, Will will stay on, and we can retain good employees, and Will can contribute to the community. And not to name names, but I thought that was a good example of, I don't know if Mark's his direct supervisor, but he surely was appreciating the hard work that he was doing and saw some room for development there.
Alright, you want me to give you a chance to go back to that one question, or should we move on to any other comments?
Partnerships.
Want me to read it again to you?
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
Cordoba has a mix of federal, state, and tribal government offices, a city school district, a city hospital, and various nonprofits. Please tell us about successful partnerships you have developed with such organizations.
We, when I was working at the DEC, we had a project that I was involved with, a marine debris cleanup. And that involved working with our, we were the grantor, we had federal monies from the Fukushima, actually, the government of Japan gave Alaska $5 million, and DEC was responsible for distributing the monies within the state. And so DEC cooperated with a nonprofit who did the actual boots-on-the-ground. It started in Kodiak, and the nonprofit had done a lot of the marine debris cleanup and put the marine debris in super sacks. And we had a big kickoff in Kodiak. They had to, it was a pretty resource-intensive cleanup project. The helicopters had to come and pick up the super sacks and sling them onto a barge that then worked its way down the coast and got to the Lower Forty-Eight where the materials could be disposed of. So that's the example that I can think of now. Thanks.
No problem. And then that was the last of the questions. We went around already, so just going to open this time for you to have any questions, comments for us. You can comment about the tour, the meet and greet, or just any, open to you now.
Yeah, well, on the tour, I've been thinking about this a little. We stopped by the Bedarki and, is it Suzie? Suzie gave us a tour and we saw the facility there. And one of the comments that she made just after the tour was that she and her four staff do the janitorial, and she is pretty fatigued by that role because they have the janitorial for the Bedarki and then these thirteen other properties in the community. And she, I think her recommendation, or, you know, her feedback at that point was that maybe there needs to be some change made where we train some of our city staff to do that for all the facilities. And have you heard that feedback? Do you, what do you recommend for that? Do you all have ideas there for Suzie?
I can kind of answer that if you guys don't want to. I think things like that, that staff has, that's kind of a manager that we're looking for, is someone who really talks to staff and get those kind of feedback and can work with them to come up with a plan to bring to us. I know I was on the tour with you, so I had that opportunity that maybe you guys didn't have to hear that feedback from Suzie. But yeah, I think something like that, that's what we're looking for, a manager, to be able to work with staff and come up with a plan to present it, something like that, to council or if that's something that you can just make the changes and it's kind of what we're looking for a manager for.
That makes sense. Anybody else? Agreement?
Right. Any other follow-up questions?
I have another question for you. I am interested in hearing about your, I was impressed with the department heads that we met yesterday on the tour, and I wondered if you could describe some about their capacity and their trajectory in the, within the organization? Like I learned that Leif took over the planner position from Sue as she was promoted from Sam Greenwood, that's right, not Sue. So I guess I would be interested in hearing a little bit about, and this fellow, Mike at the police station said he was planning to retire. So, you know, have you thought some about the vitality of your organization and whether or not it's internal promotion or movement? Do you envision, and I think there's a museum head coming on soon.
Anybody else want to?
Can I take that?
Yep.
I think that's part of what we're looking for in a manager, is somebody that can recognize potential, key personnel, and have the ability to bring them into the team and move them forward. I think that's something that we're looking for, because that's not a function of council. You know, it's the manager that hires them. But that is a quality that, I think, and we, this community, we do a lot, well, we do a lot of that. We bring people in, not necessarily with a lot of experience, but train them up and move them forward. So a good manager, that's part of their role, I think. Well, I don't know if that's, you agree with that, but that's what we like to see.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Alright, anybody else? Going, going? Alright, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and we'll just take a five-minute recess till eleven? Ten? Oh, ten, whatever time. Alright, well, back to recess at ten oh six. And Helen, we're just going to do this interview, it's really similar to how we did the phone interview with you.
Okay, great.
We have a list of questions here, and we're going to go around, and council's going to take turns asking each question. At the end, we'll give time for any follow-up questions for council and for yourself as well.
Great, thank you.
Great, and we'll start with Tom.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here. How would you approach declining revenues and increased expenses in the budget cycle?
Balancing a budget is always a difficult thing, and I don't know that there's ever a time when there's not some kind of a, some kind of friction between revenue and expenses. And in my experience, I've always let the mission of the organization, what is the kind of focus at the time, drive where the priorities are. So I'm going to assume with council, you guys have a plan, and there are certain things that have higher priorities than others. And so that would become the focus of any revenues we have. That's where you start, and then you move down the food chain, if you will, as you get to lower and lower priorities, and you start to think about, can I do without this? Can we cut this? Can we move revenues? Can we consolidate expenses? Is there any way to achieve efficiencies that will allow you to maximize the available resources and get them spread as far as possible out into the community? So it really depends on how big the gap is, but assuming that it's manageable, start at the top and work your way down. And again, looking for efficiencies, that's what I always do. And then the other thing is, is I always look for really creative ways. It's like, this is how we do it now? How could we do it differently? Is there, is there something we could even think, totally outside the box, that would allow us to accomplish what we're doing now in a different way for less?
Great. Good morning. Have you ever been involved in litigation in the context of employer-employee relationship? And if so, are you at liberty to describe it to us?
I've never been in litigation, never gotten that far. Definitely been in conflict, if you want to use that as a starting place. I ran the Anchorage Symphony Orchestra, and at the time, there was a sixty-five-member Players Association, which was a quasi-union-esque kind of an organization. It wasn't officially union. And they would negotiate with me every year on what the per-service rate was going to be to be paid for symphony services. And more than once, there was a discrepancy between what I thought we could afford, what the board thought we could afford, and what the musicians wanted. And those kinds of situations arose several times in the course of my tenure at the Anchorage Symphony. And then I had to negotiate and try to find compromise, try to find common ground, try to find understanding, and try to make sure that the parties were at least somewhat satisfied, if not totally satisfied.
Thank you.
How do you approach strategic planning? Please describe successful techniques for establishing and implementing long-range and short-range goals for Cordoba.
For Cordoba in particular?
In general.
In general, okay.
Cordoba or in general, whatever, your most comfortable.
So when I ran the Alaska State Council on the Arts, we were required by our federal partner, the National Endowment for the Arts, to create a strategic plan. And we had to not only create goals and objectives, but we had to create benchmark measurements for success. And then we had to report on those at all times. And the way we would always do that is start, as you have done with your strategic plan, is what I understand, by talking to the community that you're serving and saying, what do we need? What are we about? Who are we? What are our priorities? And really getting feedback from the affected parties that we serve. And then working from there, try to put together a plan that will accomplish these goals. Understanding, of course, that, yeah, if we could build the most amazing city and it didn't cost any money, we would all do it, but there's resource restrictions. And then layering those priorities out, and then layering on them what the resources needs are going to be, and figuring out what's short-term and long-term can be accomplished.
Thank you. And then as a follow-up, from what you've learned so far about Cordoba, what do you believe to be the city's challenges and opportunities? And what ideas do you have to develop some of those community opportunities?
I think from what I've heard and certainly experienced here, transportation's big. The fact that you're a small community is big because it limits access to certain things. But at the same time, I think being a small community is a real positive because all of a sudden, instead of having to solve a problem of a city of a hundred thousand people, you're trying to solve problems of a city of two thousand people, twenty-five hundred, fluctuating, I know. So to me, it all seems doable. And it's really a matter of figuring out, again, back to what is the most important thing to accomplish now, and then what can And then what can we accomplish in the future? So again, starting always with what the community is, is telling us the needs are and layering that with the resources and trying to figure out how to do it. And I'm really, really excited about the possibility for increased resources. I'm a, I, my whole life has been spent raising money from a variety of sources, both federal and state and community, local, private. So a lot of times, it's just coming up with the right story and the right project and then playing matchmaker. Maybe I was a matchmaker in my private life, previous life, I don't know. But, you know, figuring out, okay, what is it we want to do and how do we, how do we make that happen? And who out there might want to partner with us to make it happen? So.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Hi.
Cordova has a mix of federal, state, and tribal government offices, a city, school district, a city hospital, and various nonprofits. Please tell us about successful partnerships you have developed with such organizations.
I think probably the one that comes to mind most, that really involved everybody, I guess, is a project I worked on when I was at the Rasmussen Foundation. The foundation decided to make a real significant investment in a, in a neighborhood in Mountain View, Mountain View in Anchorage. And they decided to do a real comprehensive approach to can we change the dynamics of this neighborhood? So I partnered with Department of Justice, the city police department on issues of crime prevention and that sort of thing. I partnered with Cook Inlet Housing and HUD and others on housing, low-income mixed-use housing. I partnered with EDA, Economic Development and Administration, federal and state and local resources to try to look at developing job opportunities in the neighborhood. And then I worked with private entities, corporate and others. For instance, we got Credit Union one, which is a local, I guess it's somewhat statewide bank, to put a branch in Mountain View. And that was a really big thing, is access to, to banking services for people who don't necessarily have access to transportation, don't have access to other resources. And so we now have a community bank in that neighborhood. So I guess that would be as comprehensive as I could have ever gotten. But it was really multifaceted. It was all about how do we solve a multitude of problems? And it was bring all those resources to the table simultaneously and strategize and figure out a way.
Thank you. And then another follow-up is, what is your familiarity working with tribal governments such as the Native Village of Yak?
I actually did a grant with them on the Alanka Center when I was with Rasmussen. So I worked pretty closely with the tribal government as well as the leadership of the Alanka Center. So, but more importantly, when I was with Rasmussen, again, I had the opportunity to go statewide and I worked closely with tribal governments, some projects of importance to them, and helped deploy our resources to make sure that they got what they wanted to get done, done. So I, I traveled all over the state, small communities everywhere, little villages, little projects. Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, thanks.
What do you see as your primary strengths and your weaknesses?
Um, strengths. I tend to look for creative solutions to things. I'm a really hard worker. I don't take no for an answer. I usually try to find the yes in everything I do. And I'm a collaborator. I'm, I'm big on working with people to try to find solutions. Weaknesses, I've been told, I'm, I think I mentioned this at the last interview, I was, that I was too nice. I want to frame that to say I'm kind. And that isn't necessarily a weakness. But I do have a big heart and I think everyone has a place at the table and I like to listen. And sometimes that gets me wrapped up in more than I should, learning when to kind of draw the line and say, okay, enough, we're just gonna dive in. But I always do. I, I am capable of making a decision and I'm capable of being bad guy in a nice way, a kind way. Yeah.
Okay, Helen, to what extent do you believe contact with citizens and citizen groups is important? And how would you typically handle this responsibility?
I think that's just the imperative. I know you all were elected by your constituencies and are reflecting their desires, their needs, their wants through your individual service on the council. But I also know that you guys have other work, you have other things going on, and I'm sort of the hired man to kind of take care of certain things. I am big on public engagement. I mean, I met a lot of people last night. I've been walking down the streets and introducing myself to people, just, I mean, people I know or people I don't, you know, it's always a hello or whatever. I will be one of those people that will have probably dedicated open office hours. Come on in, I'm always gonna be there during these times. You can certainly get a meeting if you want, but I really think it's important that people feel that they have access to their government and that they have access to voice their concerns. And I don't want anyone to ever feel like I'm inaccessible, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In your experience, what is key to developing a good team?
Listening, 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 being accessible, and empowering. I think it's essential that the team feels like they are hired for their expertise and are acknowledged for their expertise and that they have the resources available to implement whatever it is that they're supposed to do. So it's important to me that people feel like they're supposed to do their job and I trust that they're gonna do their job. And if there's some problem with doing your job, that I'm gonna listen and understand what it is that's causing that problem and where possible, provide solutions. So that's really kind of my style.
All right. Well, that was the last of the questions. So the last one is just to open it up to council members. We'll see if they have any follow-up questions first. All right. And then if you have any questions to us, you can talk about the tour that you had, the meet and greet. If you have just a general question, we can kind of go back and forth this time.
I do.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Going back to the last question on a team, sometimes there's, there's just not a team player and things have to be done. Have you had to experience that and take care of those situations?
Yes, more than once. And again, my philosophy is you work as closely as possible with the individual to try to find a solution. And if it's not possible, then I think it's, it's usually in everyone's best interest. And oftentimes, the person that you've been working with goes, you know what? This isn't working for me either. And they, you know, we'll move them on. But I'm not one to let a wound fester either. So if things are problematic and things aren't happening and things aren't getting done, I'm, I'm gonna jump in and I'm gonna say, okay, what's going on? What do we need to do to fix it? And, and sometimes that will mean working outside of the individual and figuring out how we identify the problem beyond their understanding of it. And, yeah, no problem at all doing that. I have, when I started my cheese shop, which I will share with you, I had no business opening because I'd never done retail or food service in my life. So I did this cliff diving thing where you just say, what the heck? I did a lot of research, which is one of my forties. It's like, I'm not gonna do something unless I know that I'm grounded in some kind of reality. So I did a lot of research and I was told that every nine months, you're gonna have a transition of staff in retail. That's just what happens. They work about nine months and then you're gonna get some turnover. I'm really proud of the fact that in my retail establishment, I have a guy who's been with me for nine years. I have a guy that's been with me for six years. And the six, what I, that is to me a huge success. And the reason for that is because I treat them well. I give them flexibility so that they can take care of their families if need be, but not so much that they're taking advantage of my business. I compensate them as well as I possibly can because that's really important. And, and they're still with me, which is really exciting. So I've not had that turnover of nine months, oh, God, I have to train somebody new, I have to train somebody new, I have to train somebody new, so. And I have fired people. So it just didn't work out. But it wasn't like, get the hell out kind of a thing. It's like, these are the things you need to do. These are the things that you're not doing. Can we make this happen? And if they can, great. And if they can't, they know, they know that my expectations are that they either fix it or move on. And so there's never any kind of heartache about it. They kind of see it coming, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Did you have any questions for us or any comments about your tour or?
I had a great tour. I, I really learned a lot, which I will say that was a really helpful part. I, I'm familiar with a lot of services because my kids and I have participated in the recreational opportunities, the pool, the Badarki Center. We've certainly spent a lot of time on the harbor and under the harbor, which is not really what they're supposed to do, but that's what kids do. And I'm, I know that I've rescued more than one kid from a concrete sewer pipe thing, you know, because that's, again, what kids do. So I had that much knowledge of the sewer system, but I found it really informative and I, I really liked hearing from the staff who all seemed really excited about the work they're doing and empowered, which is, again, important. So I, I left the tour feeling like, this is a great team, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Helen.
So it looks like number three is council discussion for interviewees, possible motion to direct negotiation. Should we do audience participation first, though?
I think we can direct. If you want to go over that to executive.
I'll leave that up for a motion then if you ask.
Yeah, if anybody likes to say anything.
All right. So we'll, we'll go to audience participation and then just go ahead and go into executive session. Right. Audience participation, anybody from the audience want to come up and, doesn't have to be about anything that happened today, but it can be.
I think I'll stay on top.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
What'd you say?
Appreciate that.
Got enough on your plate today.
Point two, Witchhead Road, Barstool. I really just want to say I appreciate the process. I really think we can see the hard work that went into this. I can see the deep thought that's gone into this. I don't envy you your choice because you have some hard choices because you have good candidates. So thank you for all your work on this and for putting your efforts into something that's gonna have a strong impact on us going forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other audience? All right. So now we're just looking for a motion for executive session.
I don't have to end it with, there's one there?
I move to enter into executive session for the council discussion of interviewees. For this reason, subjects which may be considered are subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion, specifically a discussion of city management and everybody's.
Second.
Motion and second, any, all those in favor?
A little discussion.
Well, yeah, we can have a discussion.
I would ask the group if we could have Tony and Leif stay with that.
And I was kind of thinking too, that we could have any staff member or committee member stay and then they can all say it. And then if we want those two in particular to stay behind while the other ones leave and talk to them, then we could do that.
Yeah. I have a question. Have all three been informed of the executive session and agreed to that we can meet without them?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor for going into executive session?
Aye.
Those opposed? Right. So we'll...